Probably should start then, shouldn't we?
Probably.
All right, let's go ahead and call a meeting order. Be standing for a flag salute, please. All right, if you'd call a roll, please.
Commissioner Prinbo.
Here.
Mr. Munn.
Here.
Mr. Plaine. Mr. Garrett Kounarowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Robertson.
Here.
And the rest are absent.
Yep. So we have a bunch of minutes to take a look at them. I assume you've had an opportunity to take a look at them. Uh, let's take them one at a time. So we'll take the August minutes first. Any additions or corrections that you saw? Okay, hearing none, then those minutes will stand as presented. Moving to September fifteenth minutes, is there any additions, corrections? Hearing none, then those also will stand as presented. Moving to the October minutes, any additions or corrections? Okay, again, it will stand as presented. And finally, the November seventeenth minutes, any additions or corrections? Right, that also then stands as presented, and we're up to date. Yeah. So on our agenda, we have a section called citizens' comments. I don't see an awful lot that would be available to comment, but if there are any, now's the time to do it. Okay, moving on, then I will turn it over to staff to present our discussion tonight.
You. Um, so before you tonight is a presentation and discussion on the city of Lebanon's severe rent burden status, and we will go through that in detail. But basically what that means is that you have at least thirty percent, uh, at least twenty percent of your households um, within Lebanon that are paying more than fifty percent of their income towards their rent. Um, and I may be wrong on those stats, but John will correct me here, but uh, we basically reached a threshold based off of the state's requirements to host this meeting at least once a year until we get down below that threshold. And now that I'm thinking about it, it's probably twenty-five percent of our uh, households um, that meet that threshold. And so this meeting is to discuss our, our current status, the burdens to uh, high rents, uh, the causes associated with it, and then any potential solutions. Um, so we have two of our um, service providers that are here to uh, help present and discuss it. We have Crossroads Communities, which are these two lovely gentlemen here, KJ and Michael. And then we have from Dev Northwest, it's Rebecca, and I'm gonna butcher the last name, I think it's Weinsteiger. Woo-hoo. Um, and so to uh, kick it off, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation. This is meant to be a discussion, and so I encourage the planning commissioners, if you have any questions along the way, to interject a- and ask along the way. And then we also uh, suggest that as well for our present, our uh, other presenters and uh, community service partners as well. So with that, we have John, our uh, rare uh, community member that is going to be presenting with me, and so I'm gonna share my screen, and he can kick it off.
Give me a minute, so I can I'm on a small, small laptop in the hotel room, trying to make sure I can see everything. Okay, I think I've got it now. Um, yeah, so tonight, we're going to be discussing the issues regarding housing, including cost burdens, rent barriers, uh, how those burdens have changed, especially over the last couple of years, and increased mostly. And at the end, kind of discussing possible solutions to alleviate these growing problems and pains, and uh, so it could really start off as, why are we having this discussion? Uh, House Bill four zero zero six was passed in two thousand eighteen, and this bill is requiring that all cities with a population over ten thousand people uh, hold a public meeting to discuss these issues if they're severely rent burdened. Uh, alongside this, the bill has other requirements, which is requiring a housing production report and strategy. So our housing needs analysis is included from that bill's requirement. It's just, that's really why we're here, is the requirement, and also because this is a growing issue for our community. But those, that's the background, is why the meeting was called and acknowledged bill's purpose. I think we can go to the next one. Um, all right. I can't see very well from my side, but uh, this is kind of going over what some of the key terminology around this issue is. So defining when housing is affordable and when it is cost burden, and that comes to thirty percent of the household's income per month. Uh, if you're below that thirty percent mark, it's affordable, and when you exceed that thirty percent mark, you're considered cost burdened as far as housing. And over fifty percent of your monthly income going towards your housing costs, you would be severely burdened. And usually in those cases, it's severely rent burden. And then regulated affordable units, those are just dwelling subjects to regulatory agreements, uh, specifically helping uh, low-income individuals and helping alleviate the conditions and burdens placed on them by these growing rental and housing costs. Uh, so it's just some language to keep in mind as we progress forward, to help you understand some of the stats and the terms and topics brought up.
Uh, John, I got a question.
Yeah.
So where do they get these numbers, the thirty percent of the household or this population of our town? Who are they pulling for these numbers? And what, what, what income range are they in?
The income range, and I will cover it later, and I don't have all the numbers right in front of me, uh, uh, cause I am off at training in Roethberg and have very little with me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They, no, you're good, you're good, you're good. I'm happy to be here.
I can jump in here, John. So the, the status of the thirty percent versus fifty percent, it's not income-based. This is an establishment of even if you are a millionaire, you, if you are spending more than thirty percent of your income towards your housing costs, you are considered to be housing cost burdened because you're spending more than what the federal government guidelines have identified as affordable per your income ratio. So this identifies that no matter what income basis you are, if you're spending more than thirty percent of what you have, you are spending too much on your housing. If you're spending more than fifty percent of what you have and what you take home, you are severely spending more than what, what you have for housing. Um, and so when you identify these cost burdens, that means that you're identifying that the housing in your area for the incomes of the people that live here is too costly to afford based off of the incomes in the area when you're getting into the severe rent burden status.
As a rental cost or a homeownership cost, or both?
This is talking about rental and rental costs. Generally speaking, the, the housed cost burden status of thirty percent, when you go to buy a home and you have to pay a mortgage, they pay attention to your debt to income ratio, they pay attention to your income to mortgage ratio. And your thirty percent associated with that is, is the sweet number that you will have difficulty finding lending on, if you exceed that.
If your credit score is over six eighty, most lenders will go up to thirty-five percent, but it's harder to get to any higher than that for it to be considered acceptable for a mortgage.
Questions?
That's net.
Thank you.
Gross.
No, thank you, Kelly, it's called mortgages. I have no personal experience to speak on regarding that. Um, so uh, this slide, this is just kind of a overview of the severe housing cost burden, and specifically in Lebanon. So the state of Oregon determines their list of cities that are severely rent burdened uh, by those cities who have a population over twenty-five percent of their population are experiencing this severe rent burden. Uh, I will note that Lebanon is one of twenty-five, twenty-five cities on this list of the thirty-eight cities with the population between ten and twenty-five thousand. But on more positive note, we have actually gone down three percent from thirty-two point nine percent last year to twenty-nine point nine percent. So the efforts that we're putting in helping with housing are having us there's a tangible difference being felt, and it is showing up in the numbers alone and in people's lives as well. So we are doing things in the correct manner and helping out with this issue. So a positive note to keep in mind, cause I know this is not necessarily the most happiest topic. But we're, we're working on it.
Stat to uh, point out here is, last year when we did this conversation, the city of Lebanon was one of eleven cities that fell under the severe rent burden category. We're now up to one of twenty-five cities. So Lebanon is going in the right direction, the state as a whole still has a pretty significant issue of concern. But, but we are making strides, and a lot of that stride you guys see here on the planning commission by just the sheer number of housing units that are being constructed. And in the last year, we've approved through the city, three different affordable housing projects that have met almost two hundred units that are designated as affordable units. So there are strides that are being made here.
Uh, this is just a look at the cost burden by income arrangements in a statewide manner. Um, of course, a lot of the data is not fully out there, and we've been pulling what we can as it's been slowly released due to the pandemic and everything taking longer. Uh, but this does show that a large number of people are feeling these burdens, especially in the lower-than-average income uh, population. Give me a minute.
I, I think the important thing to see here is the correlation between the, the dark red is the considered rent burden, so that's the thirty percent or more than thirty percent cost. And then the severe rent burden is the lighter version. As you get to the lower income categories, you see a direct correlation between severe rent burden for the lower incomes. As you get to a more middle-income area, there's a greater divergence between a cost burden, which is difficult, to the severe rent burden, which is extremely difficult.
So this is a look at the cost of rents and how it has increased uh, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, on average, it has increased twelve percent, and that is on average, taking the the percentage increase in every type of unit from two bedrooms and efficiencies up to four-bedroom rental units. For for the market rents, uh, that data was pulled based off of rental websites, so it's the data that people are looking at every day, and that's where those numbers come from. And then I reverse calculated the income needed that they, that someone would need to make to afford those units. And while twelve percent increase is a large increase, I would like to address that the efficiency units alone saw a nineteen percent increase between those few years. So on the whole, some have gone down to only a nine percent increase, and others are becoming more expensive. I won't speak to what that correlation implies, but I did want to address that twelve percent, some are much higher than twelve percent.
And the income needed, the, the reverse calculation that he was discussing was based off of the thirty percent's uh, number. And so this is basically the minimum income that you would need to be considered to, to be a, a stable house uh, option. Um, and so it's, that's basically the floor of it. You would need to make more than that to fall under the, not the cost burdened category, basically.
So the fifteen ninety-one, sixty-three, six forty is the ratio, is you're below the thirty percent?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
This is a look at uh, Lebanon's household income pulled from this data and the numbers they had on file that existed. Uh, so based off of the numbers shown, it shows that around forty percent of the households in Lebanon could not afford to pay more than seven hundred twenty-five dollars a month in rent without suffering from being rent burdened. And then I can barely see my own presentation on the full screen, but the seven twenty-five and nine seventy ti- nine seventy-two a month, and the one below it, uh, correlate directly with those income ranges they're next to, which I cannot read. So, if Kelly could.
I can get you. So I, I think, let's go back one slide, and if you see here for an efficiency unit, you need seven hundred and ninety-four dollars a month is the average market rate rent. That is higher than what over, almost twenty nine, twenty-seven hundred households can afford right now in our own community, in terms of the rent equity. Um, and so twenty-seven hundred households, and this is households, which is more than one person. An efficiency unit is usually a studio that holds one, two people max. Um, households, including families, can, twenty-seven hundred of them can't afford a, a basic efficiency unit at this point in time, based off of the market rents. Um, the additional nine hundred and seven units that fall to between thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand uh, households can only afford nine hundred and seventy-two months, which equates to not even a one-bedroom rental unit at this point in time. So I think that, that correlation between these two bases, it shows you the, the household income situation in Lebanon versus what the market rents are currently bearing, which causes that significant severe burden category, which is what, why we're here, basically.
Um, so we're about to start going into the address, addressing the causes of rent burden, but I just want to show that the increase in average prices of homes in land counting, uh, two-bedroom apartments and the average price per square foot compared to what the median income is. And down at the bottom, you'll just see a percentage change from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. Because again, due to COVID, not everything is up to date that is accessible. So some of these numbers are based off last year, and as soon as new data comes out, I'm sure the percentages will tell a little bit of a different story, but generally the same genre, so to speak. Um, but all this really shows is that things are becoming more expensive and incomes are increasing on the median, but we need to understand that. And we'll discuss more causes next, that for the growing population, especially, I know Lebanon will be facing that with the influx of university students coming in in the next coming years. It's something we need to keep in mind about the prices rising and what our income can meet whenever we're thinking about housing for the city and for Lebanon, Lebanon. I can never get it right, and I'm gonna stop trying.
Anybody have any questions on this one?
This is just addressing six, uh, some of the issues causing rent burden. Kelly, if you'd like to speak to this, because the words are too small for my poor little eyes.
Um, so this is us spitballing what some of the causes of rent burden are based off of our analytical information. If any of our um, community partners have any additional input, I think that would be great to add. Um, but basically, as you saw on the last slide, rents and housing costs are increasing at a faster pace than incomes are increasing, and so you're continuing to create that divide. Um, in Lebanon and mostly anywhere within the Willamette Valley, you were seeing extremely low vacancy rates, which means that our housing production has not kept in line with our increased population. And so when there's an increase in demand, that increases the price of per unit. Um, what we see, um, and partially why you're seeing the reduction in Lebanon, is we have a mismatch of housing needs based off of the type in that housing stock. We did not have a sufficient amount of apartment units, and so the market is telling you and screaming at you that we need more, and which is why you've seen so many apartment units come in. And although the apartment units are, the market rents are still expensive, they're not necessarily as expensive as somebody buying a new home or having to rent a single-family home, which is going to fall under a higher rental cost than an apartment unit per se. And so by getting, by us building different housing stock, um, a mix of apartments, a mix of the middle housing of duplexes and townhomes and single-family homes, you're going to open up enough stock for those that are stuck in single-family home rentals because that's all that was available and is too costly for them to afford, to then be able to move into a townhome or move into a, a apartment unit that is more affordable for them. Or you'll have those that are in an apartment unit who has been saving up to buy a home, but there's no housing stock because it's currently being taken up, and there's no mobility in our system. Once you create that mobility, people are going to be able to move more throughout the system and, and be able to match within their incomes more easily. Um, our lack of affordable housing, I would like to say that we have made some extreme strides in this over the last year, and thanks to some of our partners sitting in the room today. Um, and we have uh, additional um, co- opportunities for affordable housing with some uh, developers that we're currently talking to that could bring up to another hundred and seventy units of affordable housing units to the city. And that is going to significantly help with the numbers of, of those that we've identified as needed to address our population. Um, you have overall housing costs in the, the state and the region, I think you all know that and understand that pretty well. And then generally, just the insufficient housing stock based off of the increased populations. So these are, these are what we've identified at the city level based off of our input. I'm not sure if anybody from Dev Northwest or Crossroads has any additional causes that they think should be added?
What I can say is the shift from owner-occupied residences to rental properties did change a large degree because of housing being treated as a commodity rather than a, a social right. Um, again, not placing any, any statements there regarding socialism or communism or, or anything of the sort, simply uh, the way that the market works, when you have people who purchase properties to bring them on uh, as a, as a um, a commodity, that does change how the markets uh, assess pricing.
I think uh, uh, one cause and effect up there in the upper-left corner where it says rents on the rise, increasing ten percent points. I think that was, a, a lot of that was propelled by uh, the recession we had in two thousand eight. I know that there was a lot of foreclosures, and a lot of people were losing their homes, and people with money were just gobbling them up. And now those are all rentals now. So I think we, we uh, took a dip in uh, in homeownership in that period, and there was a lot more uh, available versus, you know, home buyers. So I think that that, the last part of that statement largely propelled by fifty-five plus, I don't know if that's that's really that accurate. I, I think that uh, the uh, economics played a bigger role than, than uh, people turning fifty-five or retiring.
Um.
I know this is probably pretty small for you too, John, so I can take this one as well.
Um, I was gonna just say that, you know, that discussing some of the causes and we understand issue, but it is important to address some of the consequences of being severely rent burdened, and I'll let Kelly speak to it, because I do have one other extra note that I don't think was included, that I thought about later.
Um, so we've already kind of started talking about all this kind of stuff, right? If, if you're spending fifty percent of everything that you, you have on your house alone, you don't have enough money the, to produce savings, you don't really have enough money to start trying to put together a nest egg, to purchase a home. Um, you have decreased uh, security in your housing types. Um, and you have increased mobility, um, reduced homeownership rates, like I said, because you can't save up your money. Um, and inability, and inability to, to move around to, to a household that, that you can afford if you don't have enough housing stock, basically. Um, so we've kind of already talked about all this kind of stuff, but I don't know if anybody wants to add anything else to it?
Um, if I can, one of our partners, uh, that I spoke with at Community Services Consortium pointed out a consequence that seems to often be not thought about is how severe rent burdens affects uh, employment, and how lack of housing and like the growing rental cost will force folks move to new locations that they can afford and increases employee turnover, so removing potential employees from a labor pool. So no, in Lebanon, if you can't afford to live there, or you have to, you know, take in the cost of having to travel, especially with the way gas prices fluctuate, being severely rent burdened does actually increase the effects of uh, labor shortages. And that's just my personal own experience as well, of looking at places where I could afford to live, knowing that I could afford to work there as well, and having to weigh that cost and look at the balance. So it's something for us to think about, the city moving forward, um, uh, our labor force issues and how we want to address that, and how the rent issues and housing ties into that so deeply as well. I wanted to make sure that was brought up and something to think about, cause I didn't remember putting it down on the list.
And that's a great ad. I know in working with our workforce development people, um, they use like Tillamook as, as a prime example of the rent burden and housing issues and how it affects the, the labor force. Um, you know, you have some jobs that have been open and available for some of their major industries um, for years, and they cannot fill them because when you ha- when they've been able to have somebody come in and interview, and they have an interest in, in moving forward with the position, they cannot find housing within sixty miles of, of their job site. Um, and if you can't find housing within sixty miles of your job site, you're traveling more than an hour each way per day, if that doesn't create a livability. If there's another job of a comparable pay in an area that is less severe rent burden, less house burden, then they're gonna move to a different location. And so that is a, a real consequence. Luckily, here in Lebanon, it isn't as pronounced as, as that example in Tillamook. But it is something that, that could be exacerbated if we don't continue to provide housing for all.
There is one thing that I would add to the list, and this is something that goes unreviewed by a lot of folks. Uh, there is a major mental strain that comes with constantly being near that point of break that most of us fortunately never have to deal with. And so what I would just add is the fact that a lot of folks who uh, encounter people near the edge of poverty or near houselessness on a, uh, who are, have been hanging out for a long time in that regard, uh, there's an initial disconnect, if you're not familiar, that if you have someone who's near the breaking point, they said, oh, well, all you have to do is head on over to one town over and they'll be able to help you. There's a lot of things that are missed. Uh, what else they have going on, they've been worrying about this for thirteen months, where the rest of us might think, oh, I might be a little bit short this month, and then be able to push that off. When you have constant stress, constant strain, constantly eating away at your mental reserves, little things become huge. When you already have a lot on your plate, you can't add another thing onto it. So I, I would say that a lot of the folks who are dealing with severe rent burden and, and poverty deal with those things on a regular basis, so much so that every little thing that gets added on the plate is already too much.
Right, and thank you, that was a great point. Um, uh, this uh, was a, the infographic you're seeing is a kind of a study taken by the Institute for Policy Research and Engagement, IPR, out of the University of Oregon. Uh, this is published in two thousand nineteen, uh, they do not have one published this year. I'll make sure to give you all an update whenever they do, I know some folks there. But this was a full take-in uh, of people's views on what the barriers to reducing rent burden were, and I'm sure still are. I can't read any of these from where I'm sitting, but. and I'm sure still are. I can't read any of these from where I'm sitting, but, uh, as usual. But it's, it's something to note, some of the, the public's concerns of what is preventing the reduction of rent burden. And it's good to think about, especially here with our partners and the Plan Commission of these issues and ways we can help address and alleviate what people see as problem.
This is somewhat interesting in terms of if you look at the, the major concerns or barriers. The, the top five have everything to do with exterior, exterior constraints uh, that are outside of necessarily the control of the city. You've got availability of vacant land. You've got the high cost of lands. Uh, land that's not development ready can mean a great many things, but that is where we can start saying that infrastructure constraints are associated with that. Um, we can talk later about how the city is starting to address some of that. System development charges is the, pretty much the start where you get into the, these are things in which the city currently does where we can take this information and say, are these things that the city should look at in trying to further address the severe rent burden situation? So system development charges, zoning restrictions, parking requirements, building code requirements, lack of political will, um, permit fees, and then the processing time. What I will say and what we do hear regularly from the development community is that the city of Lebanon, um, the length of time it takes to process permits is not of concern. Um, the lack of political will from the elected officials is, is not a, a significant factor here. Um, parking requirements, everybody complains about, but we have to counter that balance with the fact that we're a rural community and have limited public transportation aspects. Um, our zoning restrictions are extremely limited in terms of what we actually restrict. And so we do allow for a great expanse of development opportunities on our land um, with a very easy code to follow. Um, and so we, we naturally already address some of these concerns that are on the, the lower portion of response through the city response. But that doesn't mean that we can't look at, are there opportunities for, to further, um, reduce our red tape or to, to provide further services? And the people that went into developments in our city most recently can probably talk a little bit further of some ideas of what we can do as a city to, to further address reducing those barriers, so.
I think the city's done pretty well. I, uh, one of our issues out at Applegate, we had to get a variance on the parking. I don't know if any of y'all remember that, but you allowed a variance, uh, because we were able to show the, the lack of vehicles out there. And it's proved out to be very true. We don't have any congestion, no problems, no accessibility issues. We're not overwhelmed because we just don't have that many people with vehicles.
We have more visitor spots that are being used and we have people who have an assigned spot that aren't using it.
And we were able to plug in links and dial a ride, so our folks have access to public transportation. That all the systems around here are geared to be able to do this and take care of folks very well. And it helped that we started talking about this with the city four years ago and they came alongside of us every step of the way through the process and steered us away from roadblocks we'd run into or issues and helped us work through issues. It couldn't have been better.
I paid him to say that.
She did, too.
Uh, okay, so, um, this is where I guess we formally introduce our partners, um, in crime with this, uh, situation. So we do have, um, Community Services Consortium. They are a partner that is based out of Albany that provides services throughout our region to assist with, um, oh gosh, everything under the sun, rental assistance, uh, getting people connected with, uh, food resources, with childcare, um, you name it. We have, um, Dev Northwest, which we have on the call that we would love to get input from coming up here next. They, um, also provide a great many of services here. We currently have, uh, our Community Development Block Grant Program that the city of Lebanon was the current applicant for, for the entire county, for Dev Northwest to provide, um, housing rehabilitation services for low income individuals, um, to help weatherize the houses, the homes and, and other, uh, services that they can discuss further. Um, Habitat for Humanity, they provide housing assistance and they build new houses for, um, low income households. Crossroads, which they will discuss everything that they do. And then we've already talked about C B G. And then on the affordable housing side, you have the tax credits and state funding to help build the affordable housing units, um, which Applegate Landing utilized, which Colonial Pause utilized, which the new developer who we're talking with also utilizes. That's a major funding source for affordable housing purposes, so. Um, since we haven't yet heard from Dev Northwest, we want to welcome you on the line and see if you'd like to talk a little bit about what you do and services that are provided and if you have anything to add about the conversation so far.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Can everybody hear me all right? Okay, great. Yeah, so I'm Rebecca Weinstein with Dev Northwest, an affordable housing and community development organization. And we serve six counties, Lane, Lynn, Benton, Marion, Polk, and Clackamas. Um, our services, Kelly mentioned some, but our services include financial wellbeing services. We provide one-on-one coaching to folks and counseling to folks who are wanting to figure out how to manage their, their money better. Um, and, you know, this year alone, we've had a thousand individuals complete our financial classes that help folks figure out how to pay down debt, save for a stable future, tackle college debt, et cetera. Um, we're a key partner with individual development accounts. That there are savings accounts that help low income folks get a little bit of extra money by a matched savings um, to help buy their first, uh, home, pay for college, or buy a car. Sorry, one second. Um. Then we also help people access homeownership with programs such as down payment assistance, those savings programs I mentioned. Um, and we recently completed a community land trust cottage cluster in Florence and moved in, um, our last family in October, a result of having twelve new homeowners in affordable and stable housing. Additionally, we recently be, took a leadership role in disaster recovery navigation and we helped forty-six families stabilize after losing everything to wildfire. Um, housing gives people an opportunity to build better lives. To succeed, you need a place to call home. And in Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties, like Kelly had mentioned, we run a repair program. Um, and we just wrapped up a repair project in Sweet Home with your help, uh, stabilizing eighteen homes and thirty individuals. And we have four projects underway in Lebanon with the award. We also have a community development, um, financial institution, Community Lending Works, uh, which provides safe, affordable loans to people in small businesses who are often left out of the financial mainstream. That might be people with no credit, rocky credit, or who live in rural communities without bank branches. It might be small businesses that are too new or too small to get traditional financing or that are locating in the neighborhoods that are considered risky. When the pandemic hit, Community Lending Works was a responsive community partner, moving emergency grants and loans to help our small business community survive. Hardworking people should be able to afford housing and still have enough money for groceries and other basic necessities. We proudly house a thousand residents in our affordable housing properties every night. Fifty-two of those residents live right here in Lebanon. We provide supportive resident and community health worker services to keep those residents healthy and stable in housing. We have a few units in Lebanon that have place-based section eight for individuals with severe disabilities. And we run an M O U unit, uh, program that it provides a, a priority waitlist for individuals experiencing homelessness that are referred to us from community partners such as KidCo and Lynn County Mental Health. Since the pandemic started, we were able to access and distribute over sixty-three thousand dollars in rent assistance to keep those residents, most affected by the pandemic, stable in housing, um, and not in rent debt. And then finally, we develop housing, multi-family housing, housing for special populations such as veterans, seniors, people living with disabilities. And we develop community land trust cottage clusters, affordable home ownership opportunities. At any given moment, we've got several applications out for hopeful projects. And right now we have five projects in our pipeline. We're hoping to break ground soon on two community land trust cottage clusters in Eugene and one in South Cravallis. We need to remove the barriers that Oregonians with low incomes face in finding housing they can afford close to work and close to schools. Partnerships with Lebanon are super important to the work that we do. We can't thank you enough for your efforts thus far. Because of your stable support, we've been able to repair homes so that families can stay stable in housing. We are in a housing crisis and every saved home matters. We are in this together and when I think about opportunities to strengthen our work to eliminate the stress of rent burden in Lebanon, I know you're already doing so much. The local funding commitments can go a long way in helping us leverage funds on the state level to help us pencil out projects. And you can count on Dev Northwest to continue to think outside of the box for solutions and advocate for policy change that makes housing opportunities more accessible and affordable. And that's what I had.
Crossroads?
Go ahead, Michael.
Uh, Crossroads Community is a Lebanon-based nonprofit organization focused on providing assistance to people in crisis. We have a special focus for individuals who are, uh, suffering from houselessness, uh, at risk for houselessness, individuals overcoming substance abuse issues, mental illnesses, and veterans. Uh, our focus is to be able to coordinate care and provide services to individuals that are currently, uh, dealing with any of these issues or in the process of overcoming these issues. Uh, in, at the moment, that relates to our services onsite at Applegate Landing, a forty-eight unit affordable housing complex that opened up on August thirtieth of this year. Uh, our focus is working with project partners to be able to provide services to folks that need it no cost. So onsite at Applegate Landing, we provide, uh, coordinated services. We bring in project partners who can offer services. Uh, we run community events. Later this month, we have, uh, free dental screenings with fluoride treatments and sealants at no cost to people. Um, we've done free haircuts. We have a food nutrition support program that we provide. If there's a service out there, either we can look to provide it or we have a project partner who can provide it. And our goal is to help reduce barriers to services to make it easier for people who need that extra help. So we like to say that we help coordinate services so that we do a lot of good, but we also help others do good well.
Have any questions or comments for our service providers that have joined us today?
Please feel free to ask.
How much demand is there for your service?
I can't hear.
How much demand?
How much demand?
So the, so the, the first day that we did our lease-up event, we had forty-eight units and we had almost eighty applicants. By the time we actually opened, which was several months later, our waitlist is now a hundred and fifty-seven long. So, uh, we brought in forty-eight units. There's much more demand than we are able to satisfy with that.
Oh, good.
State wants us to do?
Uh, there's a new process going through the state where they're introducing, uh, what are called Behavioral Health Resource Networks, or B H R N, that requires that service providers who are receiving money from O H A partner with other service providers to reduce the likelihood of people falling through the service cracks. So, uh, we're helping to champion that initiative and we're working with several different counties to be able to bring that to bear. And these burns are in the process of form, uh, formulating this week with, uh, grant requests going in by tomorrow. So.
To talk directly to your what's of demand, not just in Lebanon, but, um, this O H A asked us to, um, take our idea to, they gave us money to go out to eight different communities to export what Crossroads does with not only the affordable housing, but the wraparound services. So those people that are in that affordable housing are a lot more stable. You don't have the turnover, the damages, the incidents. They said you can do it with eight, but you have to be invited in. We are currently up to nineteen that we've been asked to go into. Kind of give you an idea, and it's all over the state, even eastern Oregon. Uh, John Day of all places. But there's, uh, there's a lot of demand and we, we could do a lot more here in Lebanon. Like Michael said, a hundred and fifty-seven on our waiting list right now for forty-eight units. So that there, there's a lot of need out there.
Could you tell us a little bit more about your wraparound services?
Well, that's kind of what Michael was speaking to. This was an idea that I had on the back of a napkin four and a half years ago when someone asked me, what would you do if money wasn't an object? That was a dare. So I had to, and then Michael got involved and we started saying, what are the challenges for folks? And the challenge is if you, if you go in, make a phone call saying, I need help with this, great, go to Corvallis or go over to Albany and then they'll help you with that one narrow thing. And then the other stuff you need, go back to Albany, go back to Corvallis, you're back and forth, back and forth. These folks can't do that. That's a barrier. They're not going to get the help they need. So our idea was, which is why we called it Crossroads, here's a hub where all these service providers can come in and feed into us and provide onsite assistance for people, keep them more stable. And we don't, we don't provide a service, as it's called. Uh, we provide coordination. A prime example is one of our clients came, he moved in, one of the first ones to move in, he came from, uh, Lynn County Mental Health. When he came to us, it was the first time he'd had a roof over his head in almost five years. He has four different caseworkers for four different issues and none of them talked to each other. So there was no coordination. So he was having, and this is a gentleman that had a traumatic brain injury. He's a veteran. He's challenged as it is. So how do you help him? Well, one of our folks acting as a case manager was able to coordinate all four of those folks, get the signed releases so we could release information back and forth and get the flow going. And he'd never been in a place more than two weeks and he's been there since the end of August. He still has his challenges, but we know who to call, we know who to talk to, we know how to coordinate. Just because we took charge of that and coordinated those things, he's a lot more stable. And we've, in fact, since we opened, we've only had one person move out, I guess would be the way to say it. He died. Uh, yeah. Way I want to go, he was sitting on his couch watching, uh, Fox News early in the morning, fell asleep and just didn't wake up. I choose that one. But it, what we do is we coordinate all these services. We are, we've started doing intake now and outreach so that we've got people out in the community talking to the folks. Is, in Lebanon, we don't have that many homeless, um, as some people would make you think. I know I, I see him all the time. I, uh, I'm dressed this way because I just made, uh, elk gulash over at the soup kitchen all day today and came straight from there to here. We have probably true homeless about twenty to twenty-five people. But boy, do we have a lot of folks that are living on the edge. We get families that come into the soup kitchen that need that help to be able to feed the family because they just don't have enough money. It's just not there. So we're, the soup kitchen, we've been feeding them for thirty-three years. Never missed a meal, won't miss a meal. There's a lot of need out there. And when people found out what our rents were, we got slammed. Our studio, we run from studio apartments to three-bed, two-bath apartments. And they run from two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month to nine hundred and ten dollars a month is the most.
And those three-bedroom apartments are the size of a small house. They're over a thousand, or eleven, they're over eleven hundred square foot.
Eleven hundred and twenty-seven square foot.
So logistically, how do these people get ahold of you? Do you have an office, uh, with, with a receptionist or? Can you kind of?
I can't understand you. I'm sorry. I won't tell if you won't tell.
Logistically, how does this work? Do you have a person in an office or, or do you have somebody that goes out and contacts these people? How do these people get ahold?
A little bit of both. And then we have a lot, uh, a lot come to us through our partners, our peer partners.
We helped, we helped place, uh, nine people from We helped, we helped place uh nine people from Community Services Consortium, uh, one person from Lynn County Mental Health, and three domestic violence folks through our partners at Cardva and uh Percy House.
So we, we have twenty-three peer partners that we work with to help uh take care of our clients and then reach out to folks um, and get them the, the help that they need. Instead of sending them places, we sit down with them. I commuted a minute and a half to walk from my office. It's right here, right behind the old post office. Um, and we do int, we do intake there. Um, so we, we have people that, uh, right now it's by appointment because we're still staffing up. But we'll have that open all the time and we have people working out of the soup kitchen, uh, working out in Sweet Home a little bit now, um, starting to get them out. Apparently, I'm the only one that knows where all these people are. So I keep taking our folks out and I keep throwing them at Frank and telling them, show them where they're at with the police department, going a ride along.
As, as a planning commissioner, what would you like to see us do?
Just say yes to everything I ask for building. What more could I ask for?
We'll make sure he follows the development code beforehand.
Fi, find us a place for mobile shelters. That'd be a really good one to begin.
Can I ask a question? Um, Applegate was kind of before my time when I was here, so I'm just not educated on how that went before. But you, as a nonprofit, own that complex?
Well, no, we don't own it. We won't, we work out of it in conjunction with our partners. We have a unique, we're a nonprofit, they're a for-profit, and we've learned how to work together to make that what the state wanted.
So the, the combination is a reduction in their cost of overhead for uh onsite services, and we have no operating expense there beyond our staffing. So we paid them a, a dollar for a thirty-year lease, and they're covering all of our utility costs except for our broadband and phones. And in return, they don't have to be paying for resident services because we're able to provide wraparound services with coordinated care.
Wow.
Does Crossroads have a website or anything to be able to reach out?
CrossroadsC dot O R G.
And if you want to chat with me, I have some cards I can provide you. I'm the executive director.
We would love to have any of you who want to come out and take a look at what we've got and how we're set up. Uh, you'll even love our pool table, our floor-to-ceiling rock fireplace, and the full gym we have.
We have a mental health room specifically for project partners who are coming in for one-on-one family or peer support. We have a physical health room where we can have providers come in to provide gentle, uh, general wellness checks, dental exams, eye exams, and the like. So we provide the, the location and our, the project providers offer the services.
Um, so all of the questions and the, I was racking my brain thinking about this topic. I, if you can tell by my body language, I get like, really, I'm passionate about this as well, like. So I am, I was not aware of you guys, and I just want to say thank you for what you're doing and keep it up because
I didn't have a choice.
So many of the ideas where I was like, you know, is, you guys are, this is great.
I didn't have a choice.
No, I, so keep it, I want to come visit.
Absolutely. It's right up the road. It's, it's wonderful.
I've worked in the nonprofit side, the services part and the coaching or the like. It's great, so thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's the piece that always has been missing. It's easy to do affordable housing.
Right.
Um, and just throw people in it and hope. For a long time, rapid rehousing was the, the catchphrase. The problem was, you were taking people straight from the street and throwing them into housing with no support, no cover, nothing. I mean, there was just nothing. And then they would blow up the situation within two weeks and be back out on the street. And now they're back into the system, and now you have to pay to have the apartment cleaned, repaired, or whatever. This way, they meet us when they walk in the door to move in. A lot of them met us at the lease-up event because we were there, making sure, hey, you, you know we're here. Here's a menu of all the things we can help you with. What do you want help with? We can coordinate all this. And it's kind of taken off. The state kind of likes our, our model. They modeled the burn after what we did.
What is your next upcoming project?
We've got uh funding that's going to be requested for a uh South Salem. Oh, no, West Salem, excuse me. Um, we're working with Coos County. Um, we've been in, we've been asked by Benton County, they discovered they have homeless.
We're working with a project developer over there who's building a hundred units, and they want us to end the same capacity as what we're doing for Applegate.
And they, they, they want us for, for their further down the road, which will be out in Lincoln City. They, they apparently do these affordable housings all over the state.
A large problem they keep running into is resident services, which is fairly consistent for most property developers.
Right, and that's our forte. Um, we're looking to, um, we're in talks to uh do a building here in town for, what are we going to call it, the?
Lebanon Community Center.
Yeah, Lebanon Community Center. I thought Crossroads World, World Headquarters was better, but, you know, I got voted out. But we're looking to do that and have peer partners onsite. So when you walk in the front door, you stop at the front desk and you get everything from Family Tree Relief Nursery to um Mighty Oaks to CSC, to Lynn County Mental Health. All the services will have location there. Um, even STEM CTE folks there. Um, so you have that one-stop shop in East Lynn that is sorely lacking. Um, but we're still in the talks on that building. She knows, but she won't say.
Our, our focus basically is to help people choose the services that are right for them. Uh, by nature of what it is that we do, we have some people that'll want certain services but not others. It's not us, up to us to tell them what it is they need. They help determine what path they want. So if someone comes in and they decide that they're ready to get some assistance with a substance abuse issue, that's fantastic. We'll also provide an opportunity for their entire household because if you're familiar at all with substance abuse issues, it's not just one person that has to deal with it, everybody in their immediate circle does. Whether that's uh peer counseling or whether it's family counseling, so you can break the circle of codependency. Uh, kids may end up, if they have a parent that has a substance abuse issue, they may need some counseling or some additional treatment individually. So it's being able to bring all those services to site by having, by having childcare onsite that removes another barrier that low-income families have, finding someone to watch their kids while, you know, if they don't have that support structure, while they're trying to be able to get help for themselves. If we have childcare services onsite, that's one less reason they'd have to not get the assistance.
We, we want to remove their excuses. Just, here it is. You know, you can, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I can drown him. And that's what we do.
The focus we take is collaboration, because that's something that has been missing in social services for a long time. Everybody has their own little things that they're really, really good at, and they don't ever look beyond that. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We don't want to do what other people are doing. We want to include them in what we are doing. So by offering services, for example, uh, the Lebanon Community Center, we're looking at offering um rates for, for our project partners coming into, uh, to take uh space. We're going to provide them a lease, but it's going to be at one-third the standard cost for per square foot. And then we're also covering all the utilities and everything regarding, regarding their standard operations. So we're going to cover uh security, janitorial, we're going to cover phones, internet. The objective is to be able to keep their overhead as low as possible because we're a nonprofit, we're not interested in making money on the site. We're interested in making a site for the community. So since we don't have to worry about turning a profit or, or engaging our, our investors, we just need to make sure that at the end of the month, we're still in the black. And we can easily do that by charging significantly less and still providing all those benefits.
And you're right, you, you probably haven't heard of us. We do what's called guerrilla marketing. I do not want to overpromise and underdeliver. I'd rather have a moment like this where it's like, oh yeah, by the way, this is what we do, and you go.
No, I just think with COVID and
I would much rather do that.
Being away a little bit.
Because I, I, and this has been a long slog. I mean, I had a county commissioner, and we briefed him on this, looked me in the eye and told me, you're never going to get this done. If it could be, we'd have done it already. Well, nanny, nanny, boo boo.
So are you uh state-funded, or you have grants and then private funding, or how does that, how are you?
All of the above. We, I, as the executive director, refuse to just have a single source of funding because you never know when that'll dry up. So I'm always out there hitting the road, looking for grant opportunities. We have some foundation-based funding. We are funded currently through two different divisions of Oregon, ODVA and OHA. Um, we're looking to diversify that further next year as well as some larger, um, some larger foundation-based funds.
We're also looking at doing some commercial operations to, uh, because we understand, we don't want to be reliant on grants forever. Uh, because the political winds could change and everything could change on us. So we're looking at doing some different things to uh commercially raise money to uh support our, our programs.
That's tied into a job creation program we're working on to provide job training opportunities where we can pay people to learn how to do a task and then assist them with finding a job once they receive training through us. If, for example, we have a, uh, our own little kitchen where we're providing certain services for uh, for uh small restaurants or dark kitchens or catering, then we can teach people how to do food preparation and hospitality, and then assist them with getting a job at a hotel or a, uh, or another place that provides a living wage. And then at the same point in time, we can charge for those services that we offer for catering and like, and create additional residual income.
Have any of you heard of Black Rifle Coffee?
Yep.
You ever seen their commercials?
I've seen some advertisements.
Go on the internet and look at their commercials. You don't know what the coffee tastes like, but by God, you got to have it. Think that, for Lebanon.
So we're, we're looking at, at pursuing uh coffee bean roasting, bakery work. Um, we're in talks with Albany about getting a grocery store set up there because there are certain areas of Albany that for-profit grocery stores traditionally don't do very well, but be great. It'd be great for a training location where we can bring people, train, pay them to learn how to do it. Um, and then also service the community at the same time. It's again, just those, it's not just a singular benefit. We're looking to be able to stack up benefits from, for greater results.
Grab self-sustaining.
I mean, it'd be great if we can put ourselves out of a job, but that won't be very likely, but we can still make a dent.
What extent are you involved in drug, alcohol, and mental rehabilitation?
So for folks who enter our program, have usually already received primary care. So for example, they go to Samaritan, to, to the detox center and go through their inpatient. After you're finished with any program, whether it be a short stay, a location like that, or something longer for Pacific Northwest Adult Teen Challenge, when you leave those programs, you have aftercare. And for a lot of those places, aftercare is, bye, we'll see you in a month, and that's it.
Here's your plan.
But a lot of those folks will just go right back in the situation that got them there in the first place, and then they relapse. Because you're never recovered. You're always in recovery, and then either you continue to be in recovery or you relapse and need to go back into treatment. People have a much higher success rate when they have a uh positive outlook and they're in a positive surrounding and they have a positive, positive support structure. A lot of people that have those three things don't get, don't have an issue with substance abuse in the first place. So a lot of people need it dramatically. Crossroads Communities is one of those service providers, partners that can provide the aftercare once primary care is already achieved. So once someone is physically done with an addiction, there's still the, the mental and emotional issues that go into that, and for that, they need ongoing care. If they come into one of our programs, we can provide them uh case management services, coordinate peer, uh, peer-to-peer counseling, maybe as needed, some mental health counseling, get them those. And accountability, exactly. We get them the opportunities and give them the greatest chance to succeed by providing them the tools in a singular location. Again, they don't have to bounce all over the place. Uh, we also assist, as of next year, we will be assisting with job placement for people that are in recovery or currently going through MAT, uh, medical assisted treatment. So that way they can get job skills and then start pulling themselves out of the hole that they may have created or have been suffering from for a long time due to these substance abuse issues, so they can actually get their life jump-started. And sometimes with a good jumpstart, what you need is a push, and so we're there to help provide that.
I know that, that we've gotten away from our discussion of rent burden, but I think that these issues that we've been discussing have a lot to do with.
It does.
That's the reason we exist, because you're right, none of these issues is a singular island of a problem. A lot of these go together.
Rent burden is often considered a symptom. It, it is not the problem. It is, it is a symptom towards an overall issue of a bigger, greater problem.
So a lot of that can be generational, where you have with one family that had, that deals with poverty, it gets passed on and on and on because they don't have the same opportunities that other folks that are even lower-middle-class have or upper-class, or anybody that, you know, I'm going to college because that's what I'm supposed to do. It's, I'd like to go to college, but I don't have the money. Um, so we, we're looking at uh putting a brake in generational poverty by providing opportunities for uh what are low-to-moderate income households, uh, in conjunction with getting them housing.
You know, like uh getting them in through LBCC's Adult Reentry Program and getting them in through the, some of the schools there, the Mechatronics classes, welding, plumbing. I mean, we, we pay a plumber around here a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year because there's so few of them. Who doesn't want to make that kind of money for turning a wrench? I mean, I won't because I'm not allowed to in my house, but you know.
So long, 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 long time ago, when I was in college, uh, we had a course on fighting fire, and I'm, I'll get to my point here in a second. But they taught us that if you throw dirt at the flames, you will never put the fire out. You've got to throw dirt at the source.
Right.
So your, your boots are on the ground, you're in the trenches. What do you see is the source? What's causing these issues?
On the housing side? Or the people?
Well, yeah, we're actually talking two different things here. People uh is what you deal with primarily.
People, I can tell you in my experience with the twenty-six years in law enforcement and then working at the soup kitchen, there's no one thing that causes it. Uh, a lot of the folks that we have, um, have mental health issues. And with mental health issues out on the street and running with the crowd, they then bran, branch into alcohol and drugs, which can't be anything but good if you're already mentally unstable. Um, and it's hard to, to treat. We, we've got one young man, I won't say his name, he's been around quite a while. Um, at the soup kitchen, he's so bad that this last summer, we had to do a foot wash station and disinfect because he had spider bites all over because of one place he laid in the weeds. Thankfully, and everybody will look at me funny, thankfully, he went to jail. That was the best thing in the world for him. They got his meds figured out, they got his feet squared away, they got de-loused, healthy, and came back, and I, I just saw him tonight. He has severe mental health issues and gets into drugs and alcohol with it. But he sits in the soup kitchen and plays that piano like he's in a concert hall. Couldn't tell you what he ate five minutes before, but he can play that piano beautifully. I could show it to you on my phone right now. The, the dichotomy of these folks is just amazing to me. Remove the drugs, remove the alcohol, and have a mental health treatment facility that, you know, down in California, when I was deputy sheriff, we could put someone on a fifty-one-fifty hold. And that is, you're going in for three days whether you like it or not, and you get reviewed, talk to doctors, look at the meds, talk to psychologists, and then they make a determination, what's the best thing for you? We force the issue of getting them into treatment. Some of them it took, some of them they walked away from it. We don't have the facilities and haven't had since the nineties for mental health treatment. And it's become rampant. Now, in Lebanon, our numbers are so far down from where they used to be. This time, two years ago, we would open up the doors and we would feed on the low end a hundred and fifty people a night. Right now, fifty. Of those, twenty-some are real homeless. Um, when we run the warming center at our church, we might get two people in, because we, we have an accountability thing going. No drugs, no alcohol, no smoking in the building. And they have made, those people out there have made a choice that they would rather have the right to go out and do drugs and alcohol and run around the streets as opposed to stay warm. The housing side in Lebanon, when we brought the medical school in, that's when everything flipped, I think. The first group of, I remember the first group of kids that came in, their parents, it was cheaper for their parents to just buy the houses up that you were talking about with the, um, when we went through the oh-eight, oh-nine and people were losing their houses. They came in and bought a lot of houses. And then now they're rentals and then we brought more and more in, which is great for Lebanon. But it's forcing the price of, uh, housing up so high, I can't even look at it. We just had a CMA done on my house. I live two blocks that way on Sherman. Had a C- a CMA done on it just because I damn near got nosebleed looking at the numbers. I never would have thought that house I paid a hundred and fifty for is now worth four hundred thousand. On this market.
Prior to 2008, over sixty percent of the homes in Lebanon were owner-occupied. And now, uh, as of this year, it's presumed we just dropped down below fifty percent. So high forty-nine point somethings. Uh, if there's another housing crash next year, we will probably be lucky if we manage to keep it over forty percent. And the more rentals you have, it's really strange. In the eighties, it used to be renting was more expensive, or it used to be that buying was more expensive than renting. But if you take a look at it now, uh, what the cost is quickly turning up to be, as long as you have decent credit, you'll actually spend less monthly on a mortgage than you will on your rent.
The only problem is try to find a house.
See, from a planning commission perspective, uh, this is the side of the equation that we have to focus on. What you guys are doing is absolutely essential and, and I applaud you for doing it. The other side of it, the affordability element, uh, is really where our focus is. But they can't, you're right, they play hand in hand.
They, they really do. I mean, when we, when we first thought of Crossroads, my first thought was a tiny home village. You know, I thought, wow, this is, this is the answer. We had a, had a nonprofit, uh, tiny home builder up, up in Salem that was willing to give us as many tiny homes as we could handle at thirty-five hundred dollars a pop. And they're like seven hundred and fifty square foot homes. Came to the city to talk to them and they said, eh, this was before you, that's for sure. This was back when Walt Windelowski, I love saying that name, when Walt was here. The problem is the city will not allow homes to be on, on wheels, uh, which I get. So they have to be on the ground and they have to have a foundation. Each foundation has an SDC attached to it. The SDC would, minimum SDC at the time, I don't know what it's doing now. At the time, it was three times the cost of the house. So that kind of blew that one out of the water. We had some land identified, we could have put a hundred of the things in there. So Applegate Landing is Plan B. Things, things like that, I mean, the, um, ADCs coming in will be helpful. But I would, I would encourage you guys to think about what would it take to put in a tiny home village here? That's, that, that's in y'all's ball, ballpark. That would be a wonderful way to handle a lot of this.
So the other option, which would possibly create some pushback because of the many moving parts, would be looking at setting up a sixty-unit, uh, housing complex, uh, or sorry, actual, uh, sorry, subdivision with sixty houses in it. And have it owned by a real estate trust that is able to sell them at lower than the market value and provide this specifically to people who are in need of housing that can verify income at sixty percent or less of the adjusted, or the, uh,
Market value.
Market, market, sorry, median income. So if you have homes that are for sale there for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-five and seventy-five thousand, regardless of the actual value of the home, if you price it under market value and required that people who move in there, hold on to the property for 10 years. And then if they need to leave, they can do so and get whatever they put back into the property. But then the real estate trust would then be able to sell it again to another family that needs it. If people stay in it for more than 10 years, they can actually start to, to, uh, receive some of the value of that appreciation. It'd be an amazing jumpstart for young families, uh, or individuals returning back on their feet. So you'd have to find a, you'd have to find a builder who would be interested in doing that property. They'd receive most of their income based on the, uh, development fees that they charge for it. And then the real estate trust would be the one then that, that owns that property.
Or find the property to start with.
Right. That could, presuming you have a benefactor or a grant or the city or the state or the county interested in putting the funding to purchase that property, then rolled it over into a trust. The city could easily make the money back in what you'd see for the pre-show benefits on the taxes that you'd create with those new properties.
Yeah, you're talking about a subdivision of the tiny homes, right?
I'm talking about ac- actual property. So we're talking about real homes, uh, what banks would consider conforming collateral. And I was a banker for 15 years, that's where our mindset is. And so you're talking about building what would in this market be considered four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and then actively choosing to sell it for seventy-five thousand dollars. But that person has certain commitments, they have to live in that property, can't be used as a rental. And then they have to live in it for a certain period of time. If they move, they can get the money back they put into it on their, uh, for their mortgage and the like, so they can move on without negatively affecting them. And then it gets to be sold again at that low price.
They would never be a rental.
It would never, it cannot be turned into a rental. That's why the real estate, that's why the real estate investment trust oversees it.
Right. See, this is what happens when you ask what are any ideas?
There used to be a program very similar to that, probably 30 years ago. Farm Home Administration used to do something very similar to that. I don't know what happened to the program.
There are still programs you'll see around Oregon that follow similar guidelines. Uh, you'll usually have a developer purchase a large piece of property and then turn that into a, uh, co-op where everybody owns their own home and kind of owns the property. But then you're, you're falling out of really what people want is they want homeownership and be able to have a say in that, in that home. And all we're talking about in this case is they can, but there's also that stipulation that it can't be sold to someone who will not be living there.
Does Habitat for Humanity kind of do something similar on those lines?
I know a little about that program, but I, I wouldn't want to say that I know everything, so I would hold back on, on committing that.
It's more one at a time.
Yeah, it's one at a time rather than addressing this large issue. And there's some stipulations they have, but I don't know about their program to comment on it.
No, I'm, I'm talking about regarding owning the land.
My understanding is. Right, and I know they, I know they purchased, they purchased it and then build up the homes. That'd be a great organization to work with if they have the, the capacity to build sixty homes. Exactly.
I, I just wanted to chime in here, Rebecca, uh, chiming in virtually. Uh, we do the Community Land Trust Homes, which I had mentioned. I actually live in one of the Community Land Trust Homes, which is a similar model, um, but different. But that's where we continue to own the land in trust, Dev Northwest. And then we sell the homes for an affordably low, below market rate, um, amount so that folks can access homeownership below the market rate. But then you can never sell the house, um, to capture any of that market rate growth. It goes through, um, a filter of sorts so that it'll stay affordable in perpetuity. And whenever the house is sold, it must go to somebody who meets the low income requirements. Um, it can't be sold to just anybody.
Okay, that's a perfect example, just a slight modification. So we're, the fact that you guys are, do that, I think that'd be a great way to start talking about making some changes in Lebanon.
Awesome.
Well, in the interest of continuing on with the conversation, then I'm sure everybody can keep interjecting. We have talked quite a lot about services that are available. They have a couple of examples of ideas of what we can pursue on the board. Some other solutions, um, that the city can do in terms of our own codes. Would be we can talk about reducing parking, um, for specifically for affordable housing projects. You, you have Crossroads that has identified that for the affordable housing project that was done for Applegate, you're not utilizing the parking that's even been provided even with the variance reduction. And so there could be a further analysis and study, uh, of demand, um, for parking for affordable pro- uh, property specifically. And then we can see if we want to talk about reducing parking for that. There's also inclusionary zoning considerations. Some cities use this, some it's not popular in. But what it identifies is if you have a project of a certain size, then after you reach a certain size and a certain number of your units should be designated specifically as affordable housing units. This is a, a type of zoning system which is, is good for integration of individuals. As, as we've seen in the past and, and as is just sort of naturally identified, there's a stigma associated with living in an affordable unit. By creating inclusionary zoning, you are creating a mix of households and a mix of incomes within the same exact project to help limit and remove that, that type of stigma as well. The city can evaluate and look at, uh, reducing waiving or at least deferring SDC charges. As was identified as an example of costs, um, burden for, uh, types of housing production, production. There's a couple of other examples up here that I won't go into great detail about, um, and that we will be talking a lot more in detail in our housing production strategy that will be kicking off next year. But you can, there's several of these different tools that are available. We could talk about any of them in detail if you would like. What I do want to at least indicate is as we are required per state law, we are going to be undertaking a housing production strategy, which is a, a review of our codes, of our existing barriers and audit of our code. And a discussion of incentives to try to promote housing, um, for all. And that is inclusive of, of anything from low-income housing to market rate housing as well as houselessness. So all of that is going to be a discussion that is going to be undertaken by the Planning Commission as the advisory board for the housing production strategy over the course of next year. And so some of these solutions that we have on the board as well as probably many others, we, we'll be discussing great detail during that procedure as well. So any questions on those?
Just one comment. The inclusionary zoning would not work well for Lebanon, simply because you'll have, um, developers who will elect to come in under the limit. So if you said, if you're building more than 40 units, a certain percentage, they'll just build 38 units. The fact of the matter is that affordable housing is affordable for everybody but the developer. So it'd make much more sense for them to just pay the extra cost that'd be required to divide the property into lots and build two separate plots next to each other. There are too many ways that that could go wrong, and I think that would probably hurt the effort more than help it.
Definitely not affordable for us. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a door.
So this slide, and John, sorry, I'm just sort of taking over from you, but keep listening.
Before I take over.
So this slide is kind of an indication of what we've talked about in the past and what we've completed and done. We, we talk about process efficiencies. We've pretty much cut as much red tape as you possibly can in our city, in our opinion. Other developers can identify if there's anything better that we can do, but we haven't heard anything of yet. So we do have online permitting. We do have expedited review processes. And we do have limited code, uh, interference, uh, for, for reviews. Our codes are clear and objective, and when it's identified as an opinion of them being not, we work through that problem. Um, and generally it is not a, an effect on a project overall. We have evaluated parking standards in the very least as it turns to, uh, duplexes um, in compliance with House Bill 2001. And through the application of some of the affordable housing projects currently, we, we have evaluated parking standards. We can continue to evaluate that if that's something that the planning commission wants to look through as part of the housing production strategy. And there are some additional enhancements to the code that we can do, specifically in terms of encouraging further density on properties or minimum densities. Identifying minimum densities does create a, a level of consideration that is not unique to the city of Lebanon, but to the Willamette Valley of wetlands. If we identify minimum densities and there's wetlands on a property, you may start to price out a property's affordability because you'd have to do well in mitigation to be able to meet those minimum densities. So that's a consideration. And then we have, under the housing opportunities, we've addressed the accessory dwelling unit standards. We've addressed housing, uh, House Bill 2001 compliance. And we are addressing the production strategy by kicking it off next year. Um, and we will also be presenting the housing needs analysis to the planning commission early next year as well for the adoption process. So, um, we've already talked about all this kind of stuff, so I don't need us to go through it again. We've already talked about the, the compliance that we have reached. So we are at the end of our presentation. Um, we do have members of the public on, um, the Zoom call as well. So before we ask if any members of the public have interest in speaking, is there any further comments from anybody?
So Kelly, what, uh, what's the anticipated outcome from tonight? What is it that we're looking for?
Exactly what has already happened is a discussion. If there are things that you have heard tonight that you have an interest in us pursuing, then I will make note of that and we can make sure that that's incorporated in the very detailed analysis as part of the housing production strategy. You can provide us direction on, that should be a priority. But other than that, it's really, it's having the discussion. Continuing to have this as an understanding, uh, throughout the year as we move forward with development proposals that there, there is an issue, um, with affordability. There is an issue with the amount of housing stock. There are growth pressures in the city associated with the expansion of Western University, which is a good thing for our community to have. And so we need to continue to work on providing housing and providing housing for all. I'd be remiss to, to not mention the fact that, um, although we haven't spoken a lot about the houseless issue, like Crossroads and, and like Dev Northwest, there is services being provided to the houseless issue to transition them into housing. But outside of the purview of the planning commission, the city council has established an ad hoc committee to evaluate the city's codes regarding, um, compliance with the, the case law from Boise and, um, possibly Grants Pass as well as the recent state legislation that was adopted this last cycle in regards to houselessness. And so that advisory committee is going to be doing an in-depth review of the city's codes and, uh, provide, uh, an advisory role to the, the city council as to how they would like to move forward with addressing the, the houseless issue that we do have here in the city of Lebanon. And so that's not necessarily something that will be solved tonight. It is one of those components of the severe rent, uh, rent burden community, uh, conversation. Um, and it is an item that the city as a whole needs to look at, but that is also being addressed under a separate committee, so.
So is this discussion or a similar discussion going to go to city council?
For the severe rent burden community discussion, this is the, the discussion that is held annually. Um, you guys are the body that holds that discussion. It will not be presented before council. For this discussion to have again, this is that public forum that's available.
Well, Kelly, on the last screen, were you suggesting that, that there should be some changes in the development code? Or were you suggesting that? Or were you suggesting that that's something that we could do on a case-by-case basis?
So there are, our code provides for an, an extreme amount of flexibility of the type of housing to be provided throughout the city and the amount of housing to be provided throughout the city. Our code doesn't employ standards that require development densities to occur, um, to a certain threshold. So, so like for example, the minimum densities, you have to, if you're gonna do a multifamily project, you need to reach a minimum density of 12 dwelling units per acre. Well, right now, on some properties, it could be extremely difficult to meet 12 dwelling units per acre because you have a wetland that's five acres in size on a seven acre property. So realistically, in terms of the developability of a property, you don't actually have that amount of acreage to be able to build on. And so if you submit and you create minimum densities, there. And so if you submit and you create minimum densities, there, there's that additional barrier and burden that's created. But that's a tool that is identified in other cities that has been utilized as a way to ensure that you're, you're building enough housing and you have enough land to build that, that type of housing. There's always things that we can do, and I'm sure if we sat here for another two hours, Crossroads can sit here and tell us about what other standards that we can apply in our development code to make it easier to, to achieve additional density and additional development.
Shut up.
I have business cards.
Yes, it is, but what it is saying is if you hear this conversation and you think that the path that we're currently on is not sufficient to continue to reduce our numbers of the severe rent, rent burden community, you could provide us direction during this conversation to say, staff, we want you to look at further development code amendments to encourage greater densities or encourage greater types of housing opportunities. All of this said, I'm kind of going to use up all of your direction because that's all going to be discussed in the public hearings and the public forums and the advisory committees as part of the housing production strategy. So if you have something specific that you want us to look at, tell me, we'll make sure that's incorporated in the conversation. But that greater, larger conversation that we're going to be having over the next year is, is going to incorporate all of this stuff that we've discussed.
So, just in my opinion, the, the slide you had up there that feeds into the problem, and you went down that long list. Most of the items on that list that we talked about that was germane to the city, we've done the best we can, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room. The items at the top of the list is beyond our control. Those are dictated to us. So I feel a little bit handcuffed. It kind of feels like they keep throwing it back to us for solutions when the solutions are obvious, but they don't want to hear those. And so I don't know what to do with that.
I think that falls under the lack of political will from elected officials.
I understand that frustration. It does feel like there's a lot that we can't do. There's a lot of tools that we can employ, and I can tell you based off of the political will, not necessarily locally, because that hasn't been a constraint or an issue. But at the state level, there definitely feels like there's a political will to help fix the issue. And, and so resources are being expanded. A spotlight is being placed on it to where although some of these upper constraints are constraints that we don't have control over, funding may become available through an alternative source through the state, through their political will, where we might be able to address the high cost of land, we might be able to address the land that's not development ready by getting infrastructure monies. There's, there's wiggle room that we're, we're starting to see that we're starting to create. The overall efficacy of all of that, we'll see what happens. But you are right that a lot of these barriers are not necessarily some, that something that a city can directly address. But by having these conversations, by understanding what our resources and our community partners are, we may be able to, to start making inroads in, in different areas that we haven't already thought about.
It is part of some of the other discussions that we've had at different meetings with regards to, you gotta kind of pay to play with that infrastructure piece. That's the big cost barrier, I think, has been a theme of meetings I've been in attendance, so.
So we do have one gentleman in the attendance area that has their hand raised to speak if you would like to open it up to public comments.
Good afternoon, or good evening, this is Brock Byers. I'm a program manager for Family Assistance and Resource Center Group. And I guess, is there anything we can do about application fees? That is an area that I'm hearing a lot from our clients, is the cost of application fees to the various rentals and such. And not only does one member, but many of the whole household has to apply in many cases. Is there anything that could be done in that respect?
Just to clarify, you're talking about when somebody goes to an apartment building and they want to rent a unit, you have to fill out an application and do like your credit check. And, and that's the application you're talking about, correct?
Correct. And then I guess I could sub, sub-question that to Crossroads. Do they charge application fees for the unhoused? The homeless unhoused?
In our case, we don't handle the management of the facility, that is Cascade Management. I do know that the fees and costs are associated with what it costs them to complete that. I know that in some cases that referring agencies have been able to cover that cost for them.
So fees are charged for the houseless then?
Correct.
Okay.
And Brock, I would add, Dev Northwest, we also contract with Cascade Management for our property management as well as Lillenbent Housing Authority. And we don't charge until the person has been accepted. So it's not something they have to pay upfront, but once they are accepted, there is a, a pretty low fee as an application fee to process.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, you've answered that question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I see here that Penny has raised her hand in the chat as well, so I think we've just allowed you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, I'm actually glad that he just asked that question because that's definitely a barrier that a lot of people have said are the application fees and being able to save up for a deposit for rental. Because if you have to have, you know, two or three months worth of your rent, that's very cost prohibitive for a lot of people. But I also want to mention something, I don't think a lot of people, I don't know if anybody's mentioned it. I came in a little late because I couldn't get the Zoom link to work. There is a, a good amount of people, I think, in town that don't necessarily fall into low income, but are technically low income. So just as a reference point, I'm disabled, I get a little over $1,000 a month. I'm getting a 5% raise, so I'm getting an extra $60 a month, but my rent in February is going up $75 a month. I was gonna eat that up very quickly, right? I have two adult sons who live with me, we live, we share, three adults share 430 square feet, which is pretty tight for $950 a month, plus water, plus electric. So by the time you add all that up, we're paying closer to 1,100 a month. Now I consider myself lucky because that's still relatively cheap compared to most places, but it's 430 square feet for three adults. But when my son was working, he was making $18 an hour. So with my disability and his income, we didn't qualify for low income. But yet just our bills every month, not including food or gas, is $1,700 a month. So by the time you add food and gas, you know, you're well over, you know, you're closer to probably 2,500. And that's basic items that people aren't talking about. Most of us that fit in this category, we have maybe a small car payment, then you have car insurance, we have renters insurance. We have basic, you know, we have internet. We don't go out to eat a lot, we don't have a lot of extra bills. But everything adds up, and I know, I've heard a couple other people in town talk about, they have their adult children living with them, they're all sharing space because you can't afford to do this separately. So I feel like there should be some in-between where you have low income housing, but then you maybe, we don't have any starter homes here anymore. They're all gone, right? All the 125, 75 to 125,000, 150,000 dollar houses are now like 300,000. So one way to reduce a rent burden is to get people into starter homes. But we don't have those. Everything's too much. So I don't know the gentleman's name who was talking about tiny house stuff. Just as a side note, I'm super into that, I have been for years, it's a great idea. I was married to a carpenter for 20 years, I love design, I will help you design homes if you need it. And I think the town really should consider either tiny homes or small homes for people. If you design them right, and you can get, you know, if we can get donations or whatever, like they were doing in Eugene, has tiny home villages that work really well. I feel like in order to reduce rent burden, we need to get people into homes that they can stay in, that are affordable. So I think that's one consideration that we're not talking a ton about. But Dev Northwest, I will be calling you because I didn't know you existed, and I'm super excited about that. So that will help. But I think, yeah, I think we need to talk about all of us that are kind of stuck in the middle of like, you're not low income, and I'm going, but I can't even get my teeth fixed because they say I'm not low income.
Penny, I would like my staff to reach out to you, and I, I don't need you to send all your personal information out to the death there. If I provide you our office number, would you be able to give us a call tomorrow?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
541-405-4210, and I'm sure we can find some programs to help you out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all so much. I'm glad I finally got Zoom to work.
Thank you.
And we have Megan Viers, that's next.
Hi. I've been listening to this for a minute now, and I agree with the lady previous that just got done talking. I also fall in the middle somewhere, I don't qualify for any assistance because I make too much to be low income. However, that too much becomes, if you don't get assistance for many of the things that people with low income do get assistance for, those bills add up. Right now, I'm paying $1,800 a month for a three-bedroom house, which I'm lucky because I can, I can raise my two children without having a second whole, second person's income. But it's still, it takes over 50% of my gross bring-home pay. And then if you add everything else into it, how, how are we gonna get help if we are in the middle? Because we can't get help because we're just over the income restrictions to get help. But then all of our money is gone because we have to pay the full price, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely.
So my question, like, where do we go? And who do we reach out to if we made just a little bit too much to qualify for any assistance? But by the end of the month, with all the bills and the house, the cost of rent, we have like pretty much nothing left.
Uh, I, I have the two lovely gentlemen here from Crossroads that are shaking their heads to say, call us and.
I took that number down.
Perfect. Please go ahead, give us a call, we're open from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And we'll be happy to, all of my staff, make sure that you're with it, they'll be getting a couple extra calls tomorrow.
Thank you.
The other group that we mentioned previously that is not here tonight, that might be able to at least be a resource to, to have a conversation is the Community Services Consortium.
They are, they are partners of ours, and we can get you in contact with them as well.
And I am redundant here and have no purpose.
This is true. And you ask what the need was.
There you go.
Never ask a question.
Penny, you still have your hand raised, I'm not sure if you have a follow-up question or?
Sorry about that, no, my phone just doesn't like to work right, I think I fixed it.
Perfect. Well, I don't see any other hands raised for public participation, so have any final comments or questions?
Does the commission have any thoughts and comments?
It, it's a real problem. I'm, I can look at my, my son, he works a job, he rents, it's definitely more than half of his income. It's, it's a real issue. I moved here two years ago almost, sticker shock moving here from the Midwest by the house. So I think it's very relevant and a need is to try to expedite traction, to make improvements, to allow for builds to happen as quickly as possible. I know that we've definitely made changes to streamline things the best that we can. The process, we just gotta get the ball rolling.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to keep the discussion going at somehow, some way, perhaps even in conjunction with the council. We've identified a lot of problem, but we need to get creative with solutions.
So maybe not to punt this to next year because that's not the plan. We do have the, the housing production strategy that we'll be starting on. We are not going to miraculously drop four to 5% of our households out of severe rent burden community in the next year. And so this will be a continued required conversation. And so we can pose a question to council if we want to do this as a joint conversation or a joint meeting to have all parties in play, that might be an option. As part of the housing production strategy, a severe rent burden community meeting will be incorporated in that conversation as well. So we'll have another one probably in the next six months as well. So we can continue the conversation on that, that further.
That works.
Crossroads Communities would be happy to host anybody from, from this committee that'd like to come out and see what we're doing at Applegate Landing. And we can provide some input onto how we could see Lebanon could use similar strategies to implement methods for helping to reduce the cost of rent and provide comprehensive services at the same time.
Not that I'm bragging, but we have an ADA accessible dog wash station. Just saying. Nobody else has that, not even Dev.
Well, that sounds like a great time for me to thank our community partners who are participating tonight. Rebecca, I really appreciate you coming. Crossroads, you guys have been a, an eye-opener for us along with Rebecca, so that's appreciated. And thank you to the public that, that signed in to participate as well for the long, valuable discussion.
Right. Okay, any final comments?
Yeah, if we have a ladder here, I'd like to get up there and change that clock.
Past your bedtime, aren't we?
Shows you how often we have meetings in person, huh?
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.